This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
No, just give me a minute and we're now at seven oh five, so I will officially open the Town of Southampton Planning Board meeting for March first, two thousand and twenty-three. We do have a quorum, Dan LaValle, Paul Fragallo and myself. Cindy Palmer is not available. So, taking out of order, I'm gonna ask Art Brown, who's here representing the Conservation Commission, when he has a request that needs to be, uh, get our approval from the, according to Highway Department, so he can have a curb cut put in one of the conservation areas. So, go ahead, Art, and just give your little spiel there.
Alright, let me, uh, let me try to find it here. Can you see that?
Yup.
Okay, um, again, Paul, thank you for putting me on the agenda. Art Lawrence, one-one-three Crookett Ledge Road, a member of the Conservation Commission. Uh, we're talking about a two automobile parking lot at our Alice Brown Conservation Area, which is, uh, thanks to you folks, we now have a number, seventy Pleasant Street. We wanna put this parking lot in in early spring when, uh, when the ground can be worked. Um, it is adjacent to Pleasant Street and would be composed of crushed rock compacted level with the road. Uh, there is a swale there that will be slightly modified to allow some rainwater shedding into a town culvert that runs under Pleasant Street. Um, as Paul mentioned, uh, Randall Camp has never given a curb cut to a parking lot, so he's asking the Planning Board to approve the project before he issues his permit. Um, after the parking lot is completed, appropriate signs will be installed and we'll be having the Kent Brothers, uh, uh, folks, uh, they'll be installing the parking lot again, as I mentioned, in early spring. Uh, I've got a couple of, uh, photos here, just a couple of maps. Uh, this is a mass mapper, just to show you the location. Um, it's kind of a weird property. It comes pretty narrow down here on Pleasant Street and then opens up. Uh, I believe we have about, uh, we have thirty-eight acres, uh, for this particular parcel. I have another picture, another spotlight picture that shows approximately where the parking lot would go and, uh, um, the arrow is pointing towards, uh, Gun Road. Um, again, just, um, we had the Holmberg and Hall do a survey of the property. We have blazed the property. Uh, we have medallions up, uh, on, uh, as close to the property line as we can get. We've also forested this, uh, particular property. And, uh, this is a, just a quick sketch from the Kent Brothers and what they're going to do. Approximate dimensions of the, uh, of the, uh, parking lot. Uh, the Alice Brown is, uh, uh, where it's written and Pleasant Street. Um, he's got a pitch over about two percent, um, and again, showing that it's, uh, it will be a compacted, uh, crushed stone base. Couple of pictures here, um, we don't need a parking lot, we already have one. Um, this is just showing, uh, approximately the area where, where this would be. Uh, let me just push this down a little bit, that's pointing towards Gun Road. And if you see in the back here is the actual, that is the conservation area. Another picture, um, this one's kinda hard to see, but I was trying to show the swale. Uh, it'll be slightly modified here, um, so that this swale currently goes into the, uh, culvert that goes underneath, uh, uh, Pleasant Street here and, uh, uh, I guess, I don't know when that was done, but it's certainly done many years ago. And then finally, um, just a picture of showing, um, this is a logging, a road that, uh, we're probably going to, in front of it, in this area here, is gonna be a, uh, a sign signifying that is a conservation area and our usual, uh, uh, information that we give on our signs, uh, hunting and so on and so forth. And if you see in the back here, there is actually, we do have, uh, one trail and we hope in the future to be developing a whole trail system, uh, in the property that I showed initially. Um, and that's pretty much it.
Very good, nice presentation, Art. Any questions or, um, from the board, Dan or Paul?
I have no questions.
So, I think you are, so are you looking for an approval from us for this?
Yeah, Paul, uh, according to Randall, he's never given this approval. He just wants to, I guess it's more of a CYA than anything else, uh. Um, he's just never given anything, uh, curb cut for a parking lot before.
Alright, so I'm, I have a few questions, I mean, I, I feel like, you mentioned, you said the word culvert, it's not really depicting how this ties into the culvert that's adjacent to the road, uh, nor does this identify roughly what the dimensions are gonna be out there on a drawing that Kent did for you. Um, I, I mean, just from a, from a basic standpoint, I, I see the site, I see the pictures and the, and the brief sketch there, but does, does Randall have concerns about the culvert? I know he's pretty particular about tying in new driveways as it falls to existing, um, roadways and culverts as they tie in, so to me, I feel like the, that's still not clear what's, what's happening here.
He, uh, we, we were out there, uh, with Mike Kent and Randall, myself, I think Marla was with us, um, and we reviewed that. He did not seem to have any issues with, uh, the proposal was to just to open up a bit that swale so that, uh, we can shed some water, rainwater, uh, and down into the culvert, it does tie right in there. Uh, there is a, um, I believe, uh, an intermittent stream that flows down from the, from the, uh, conservation area. One of the, probably one of the reasons why the culvert was put in there originally.
So where, can you look at the sketch?
Just a minute, Paul, is it because it came before us, because, um, Randall has not issued a curb cut for town properties, is that it?
He said parking lot specifically, Paul.
Oh, parking lot, yeah.
But look, this is-
Up to, excuse me, Paul, uh, uh, up to, uh, this point, he's only given a curb cut for, I guess it's, uh,
driveway.
Steam Fort driveway is, uh, is, is his max.
Can you go to the sketch, please?
Sure, which, which sketch would you like?
The hand-wan by Kent, this one.
Yeah.
Who owns the property, where is it, where's the town layout, where's the?
Pleasant Street?
Yeah, I see Pleasant Street, but where's the property line? So, is Alice Brown, is that a town, is that gonna be open to town?
It's town, it was, uh, given to the town by Alice Brown and, uh, we manage it. The, the Conservation Commission manages the property as we do with our other close to seven hundred acres in town.
So where's that culvert on the other sketch in terms of its location, where's that relative to?
I don't know if I can show that here, um, you, you see right here, the, the blue line?
Yeah.
That is the, the culvert that runs out underneath the, uh, Pleasant Street into the, into the field there.
So, where's the parking lot gonna be relative to the culvert?
It's, it's, it's pretty, the culvert's, uh, I, I mean, the, the culvert's in front of the parking lot. In other words, if you look at this sketch, uh, this, this, the, um, picture here, the culvert is like right in this area here underneath, underneath, uh, Pleasant Street.
So, with the culvert being so close, what measures are we providing to protect erosion runoff from the disturbance that's being proposed?
Um, right now, we're not doing anything, um, and we're not really expecting the changes very much, just, uh, uh, and, you know, just curving it a little bit so that it will take some of this rainwater. There's a hill here that some of this rainwater will shed instead of going onto the parking lot, we'll, we'll go into the culvert through a swell that's currently there.
So is it being excavated out or what's going on? Is the, are you taking the material that's out there and putting new material in?
Um, there's gonna be a, a, a slight modification of that area, um, but, um, I, I've been told, uh, not very much, I mean, you know, I'm, as you know, I'm an electrical engineer, not a civil, so, uh, Randall had talked to Mike about this and it didn't seem to be, uh, uh, an issue whatsoever. Maybe, uh, maybe we need to-
I, I guess, given so, we're typically, when you're so close to a, to a resource, we, we, we have proposed erosion and sediment control, particularly if you're excavating to put that, so that's what I'm hearing is, so they're gonna take out some material and put that compacted basin in, in for the, for the parking area, is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, it's in front of the actual parking lot, uh, it's not, it's not part of that, you know, uh, area, the parking lot is, uh, in this case, uh, it's ahead of the parking lot. And it's, like I say, it's currently i- in place, it's just, uh, shaving it a bit so it can take more of the water instead of the water going out to the parking lot.
Right, so that's technically a disturbance.
Uh, I would agree, yes.
So typically, when you do a disturbance, land disturbance, that's when you need to put up E and S.
Yeah, I understand, I mean, I can, I will certainly come back and, uh, we'll get, um, better definition. Uh, I didn't think that was, uh, too big of a deal, seeing that, uh, Randall and Mike Kent, uh, agreed on what should be done there, but, uh, I certainly, uh, can do that.
Uh, frankly, I wouldn't care if, if you weren't so close to a stream, but the fact of the matter is you're, you're right there.
Okay, we'll, uh, we'll do that.
You, Paul, would you, uh, consider make a condition on this and I write that up and forward it to Randall to see to it that that's taken, uh, you know, to expedite this, or do you think it needs some further review?
I mean, honestly, I don't have a hard opinion one way or another, um. This is, this is kind of a unique situation, it's town property and I don't want us to be spinning our, you know, spinning our wheels and chasing our tails, trying to get stuff through a process. And I despise process, processes as, as the older I get, the more nonsense I see and more frustration, um, I, I tend to, don't wanna deal with, so I'm not just trying to create busy work, I'm more than okay just, uh, get this, I mean, to town project, I'm sure we all have the best interest of the town, but given that there's a stream there, that needs to be addressed, so, you know, we shouldn't hold them, we shouldn't like keep this project, you know, this isn't gonna be an example, we don't want someone who come up to us and say, you know, a year from us, "Well, you know, for a town project, you didn't, you didn't meet the, the standard for, for, um, for, uh, resource protection here." So, why do we need to do it if the town doesn't do it, so? I'm just gonna throw that out.
Yeah, I, I agree, Paul, uh, let me, let me take the, uh, the ball here. I, I will sit with Randall and, and, uh, Mike Kent if we need him and we'll come up with a, with a plan that, uh, that hopefully will satisfy you, right? I, I certainly, uh, agree with your premise and we don't wanna do anything that, uh, you know, I mean, we probably could've snuck this in without doing anything, right? Uh, who the hell would've known, but, uh, uh, we figured we'd do it right and, uh, get this curb cut and get, get all the documentation done correctly. So let me, uh, uh, if you don't mind, Paul, let me, uh, get, get this together and I'll, uh, I will, I will try to get back on your agenda as soon as possible. We've got plenty of time here, there's no rush to do this. Uh, we, you know, we certainly, uh, uh, are thinking, you know, springtime and, uh, and, uh, let me, let me take that and, uh, I'll get back to you.
Well, I, I appreciate it, I would suggest next time, do it and ask for forgiveness like everybody else in town. Just kidding about the last part.
Um, so to make this official then, Paul, would I ask you to make a motion to table this until further information, uh, comes back to the board?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to table this, um, until our next meeting, uh, is that, is that two weeks from now, Paul, or is that?
Yeah, we're gonna be, March fifteenth is when we're, we're on again.
Oh my God, Paul, I'd have March, no, no. I'll look at it.
Is that enough, do you need more time?
No, that's fine.
Okay. I second.
Motion made by Paul and seconded by Dan to table the, uh, proposal until March fifteenth. All in favor, Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Alright, thanks, Art, and, um, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, gentlemen, have a good night, thank you.
Bye bye now.
Bye.
Next on the agenda, we have, uh, Mark Reed here who has, uh, is on a continuation of a public hearing for a zone, a zone change request for a three ninety-six to four-ten college highway from industrial to commercial highway, submitted by James Labree. I will read the legal announcement that was published January thirty-first and February seventh in the Daily Hampshire Gazette and all the abutters were duly notified. And the hearing reads, notice is hereby given, accordance with Mass General Election Law, Chapter forty-eight, Southampton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March first, continued to March, uh, Wednesday, March first, which was originally scheduled for, uh, February fifteenth on zone, consider request from James Labree for zone change for assessors, parcel twenty-six, map thirty-nine, College Highway and Valley Road from IP Industrial Park to CH Commercial Highway. Copy of the application may be viewed at the Town Clerk's Office or by email to the Southampton Planning Board. So now I will ask Mr. Reed to, uh, make his presentation.
Sure. Uh, for the record, my name's Mark Reed from Heritage Land Surveying and Engineering, representing, uh, Jim and Eugene Labree on this request. I can share, uh, the plans if you would like, Paul?
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Um, so, first page is just a cover letter associated with it. So, we are asking for a zone change on a fourteen-point-seven acre piece of property outlined in red, which is Valley Road and College Highway. Um, currently, there is the large red barn, which I'm gonna show you another exhibit on that for this to be converted from industrial to commercial highway. The Labrees would like to develop the property, um, not in an industrial use, but on a commercial highway use, and which they feel makes a lot more sense. And it gives them the ability of preserving the barn. Um, the barn doesn't work for any industrial use, but it may work for other uses that are allowed for in the commercial highway, such as restaurants, um, um, office space, um, you know, a pub, a coffee shop, um, you know, there's lots of different, uh, aspects that it could be, uh, preserved. So, I, I, I emailed a submission to the board, um, with another, let me just stop this one and open up another tab here. Where is my other tab? So, this is the red barn as it exists today. Um, when the Labrees bought the barn or the property that contained the barn in nineteen ninety-eight, the barn was in disarray, needed a lot of repairs. The, the whole roof, people who have been in there with BB guns and so forth, shooting holes in the roof. So they spent a lot of time and money on preserving the barn and they feel that it's a, it's a nice gateway into Southampton, the look of the barn. Um, I've got one that was pre, let's see, this one here. So that's what it was when they purchased the property, everyone can see that. So it's, it's a, you know, it's a beautiful little barn. Um, and again, unfortunately, it really doesn't lend itself to any industrial uses for it, so they're requesting that the town develop or make the zone change so that they can potentially in the future develop it into some commercial highway use.
Now, just for the board, Dan, uh, Paul remembers this from a few years ago, but for Dan's sake, uh, this has to go to town meeting, you know? The zone change proposal here at this meeting, uh, is for public input. If there should be any, I'll, I'll ask in a moment. Um, but it's strictly, we take a vote to either, um, approve the request or deny it to send it along to the Select Board to eventually be put on a town warrant for the meeting. So, that's where it's at and, um, right now, I'm gonna ask if there's anybody from the public at which to make a comment on this proposal. Hearing none, I'll ask the board for, for their thoughts.
Uh, just a question, is this property we talked about before for, uh, some storage units?
Correct.
Like confusing with something else?
No, you're not, you're not.
Alright, that was it.
Yeah, so the storage units, um, are being proposed for this section here.
Uh, we can't see anything.
Oh, I'm sorry, why can't you see it? That's weird, uh, cancel. Why is that, I get the wrong? One second, I gotta share, that's what it is. So, this is the area where the proposed storage units would be.
Where the number three ninety-nine is currently?
Correct, which-
In that area.
Needs to change, right, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so the potential future development of any commercial, if it's granted, would be in this area to the south of the barn, the barn itself and to the south.
Oh, stor- storage isn't considered commercial?
No, it's allowed, it's allowed for both.
Yeah, it's probably either, either district, yeah.
Thank you.
It was approved for the industrial one previously, but it is allowed in commercial.
That's a education point for me, thank you.
Right. This remaining land that's owned by the Labrees wouldn't be changed from its current state, which is industrial. This is where a J and E Tools building is now, and then they built a, another outbuilding on this separate parcel. So this is gonna be industrial, it's on Valley Road. Um, so the only development relative to the change in use would be in this section in here to the south of the barn and in, and including the barn.
Mark, uh, for the sake of conversation, if, if that were to change, how many, uh, given the commercial highway frontage, how many parcels could you subdivide there?
Yes, and I sent an email on that to you, Paul, and I was just flipping through it in my folder. And I believe it allows, oh, here it is, I got it. So the total parcel now, um, has approximately thirteen hundred feet of frontage along College Highway.
Right.
The IP zone is two hundred foot minimum frontage, so that would relate to six lots. Um, with a commercial highway, it is a hundred and forty feet of frontage, so potentially you could get nine lots.
That's interesting.
Um, but the majority of this area up in here, which is the frontage, is dedicated to the storage unit area. I did not calculate-
What was left?
What's left, and I, I should've done that, Paul.
No, it was just, um, you said nine, so just looking at it roughly, you probably is what, maybe five perhaps?
Right, looking at it with a hundred and forty, I mean, you'd be, you'd be doing well at five.
Yeah, so, alright, just, now, it's my guess that in twenty-five years that they've owned it, there hasn't been, I don't know how many viable proposals they've had for industrial development there and, um, of course, Jim's not here, but, uh, I don't, I don't recall anything in my time on the board, which is, you know, fifteen plus years, that anything has come from there. I do recall that, uh, he requested this several years ago, um, and unfortunately, and this board did adopt it at that time too, endorsed it, that it was, uh, denied at town meeting and-
Right.
The main reason, uh, to my knowledge that I recall was, uh, people, uh, were clamoring for open space there and, and commented how, yes, it was a gateway to the town of Southampton. And while, uh, I'm, I'm all for open space, I, I really am, but not in the commercial district, I never have been. I, I cannot, there, there's so much land in town that's open space that will come available, but when we're in a situation where we have precious little commercial highway space to begin with, um, I wouldn't advocate to, uh, deny that, uh, for the sake of open space. And if the, the barn is, uh, been there and it's quite a focal point and it's going to be preserved for maybe a future business, then that's even, uh, that's even better, so, that's my two cents. I call it economic develop-
You're, you're right, it was two thousand and nineteen, Paul, that, that we came before the board and the town, uh, didn't accept the change.
Right. Paul, any comments?
I think this is a great idea. Short and sweet.
Alright, so we make a motion?
A motion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, is it endorse, is that the right word you would use, Paul?
Yes, to, to endorse the, uh, the application for a zone change.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to endorse the application for a zone change at this subject property.
From IP to CH, correct?
Oh, excuse me, yes, from, uh, from industrial to, uh, commercial highway.
Yeah. We have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded, any other further discussion? All in favor, Paul? All in favor, Paul?
All I.
Dan?
I.
Myself, I. Okay, I will send a letter off to the uh select board and the town administrator to. Support this and hopefully we can get some positive results this time around at town meeting.
Great, thank you. Um.
And Mark, um, before you go, I've got a request from Janine because the. The three ninety-nine on on the assessor's map, some of her. In her files, three ninety-nine College Highway is incorrect. It's on the even side of the road and it's got an odd number assigned to it currently, according to her.
Correct.
Now, you gave me uh that parcel that is being three ninety-six to four ten.
Correct, that's that's what's listed on the old assessor's maps.
Yep.
For some, I think it was because it was all owned by the Getfords and they lived across the street. At three ninety-nine.
Yep.
And they own both sides of the field or the farm, so that I think. Way back when, the assessors just called it three ninety-nine, which is should be on the east side of.
Okay, so the storage facility then, I'm assuming. Is probably gonna be gonna be, should be three ninety-six, right?
Yeah, so that would make sense.
Cause that hasn't been issued yet, nor has been requested, so. Given that, and I think the the next abutting property is, from what I saw, was four twenty-two. So. Should we go with uh four ten? Or?
Well, I would recommend.
Three ninety-eight?
So, yeah, I would say three ninety-eight, Paul. Four ten wants to be down. Um, at the southern end of the property.
Right, and that's what I mean, the 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 uh. Alright, so three ninety-eight.
So, is that for the barn? So what you're saying?
No, that's for the remaining land that they want to change, that they want to change from IP to CH. And then Dan, then Dan, if they if if they get the approval to for the zone change and they subdivide it, there's numbers. They are left to assign to the next property in west toward the west field line. So three ninety-eight, I'll uh, we'll take this at the end of the meeting, but I I just wanted to clear that up, so we'll request three ninety-eight.
Okay, good.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yes, um, one other thing that. Um, I've sent an email to the board.
Yep.
With a new project, uh, being a preliminary subdivision plan. I just wanna, I don't expect anyone to act on it tonight, uh, other than to accept the filing. Um, and it is on property that is kitty corner to Cumberland Farms. And across the street from Park Place. Um, and we are proposing a cul-de-sac. That would serve two lots. And I I got a set of the plans and so forth with it, so. Um. There is commercial highway along the frontage, which is not part of this preliminary subdivision plan. The rear of the property is residential RV zone. Um. In which one of the parcels. They would like to build some, a retirement, a fifty-five and older development. So at some point in time, we'd ask that you would schedule a public hearing for it.
Yes, would you, um, so it's in your email, uh, Paul and Dan and um. The preliminary does not have to be a a public hearing, the uh, we'll set a date. Uh. And I'm not sure, Mark, uh, I can't remember, cause it's been a while since the subdivisions come along. Is the meeting with the town departments about that uh done, it's done before the preliminary or done before the uh? Uh. The definitive.
Well, I I think, I can't remember exactly, but it wouldn't hurt to have a department head meeting on the whole project, Paul.
Prior to the pre- preliminary?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so. Richard Harris is out of town, I'll get a uh in touch with him, so he can set that up, but uh it looks right now. Given if if that's the case, that uh it probably won't make it to like April. April fifth. For the preliminary, we might be able to squeeze it in the the fifteenth, but I think that's too soon.
Sure, no.
So, right now, I'm just guessing April fifth for the preliminary. And if that's the case, then two weeks after that on the nineteenth would be the public hearing for the definitive.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, so that's tentative right now.
Okay, let me just take a quick look here. Alright, yeah, well, we can talk about it and figure out, you know, scheduling of everything, Paul.
So, I'll be in touch on that.
Okay.
But yes, just to confirm that you you did uh, you did submit it in this file, thank you.
So the the plans and checks will be in your uh, the town clerk's office tomorrow, Paul?
Yep.
It won't, it won't fit in your mailbox. So, so I, so I figured we'd put it in the, at the town clerk's office.
I'll see Lucy in the morning.
Yep.
Alright, thank you, Mark.
Alright, thank you all.
Next, we have a uh stormwater hearing, I believe, is it Philippe Philippe Cravo here from uh Lebec Associates?
Yes. Present.
I did, I think Rob was going to present the last time, but now you're on board, huh?
Correct, yeah, he was gonna cover for me last uh, a couple of weeks ago, but now I'm available.
Good. Alright, so that is next on the agenda, and this again is a continuation of a public hearing, because we didn't have a forum on uh March. Fifth. March, February fifteenth. And. I will read the legal notice as it was published. Sue to MGL forty-one A Southampton Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. For a special permit application accordance with the stormwater and erosion control bylaws, section fourteen. Application is submitted by Christian Cara for seventy-one White Loaf Road. That forty-one parcel sixty-two meeting will be held by a Zoom. Application is available from the Southampton Planning Board at gmail dot com or at the town clerk's office. It was published in Daily Hampshire Gazette, January thirty-first and seventh, and all the abutters were duly notified. So, Mr. Cravo, you can have the floor.
Great, thank you.
Uh, and you can share the screen as well.
Perfect, yeah, so as a means of introduction, my name is Philippe Cravo of our Lebec Associates, forty School Street, Westfield, Massachusetts. Um, here tonight with Mr. Christian Casa, um, the property owner. For a stormwater management permit application uh for a proposed single-family home. At seventy-one White Loaf Road. See if I can uh. Start sharing a screen of a plan, can you see the the plan on on the screen?
Can you darken it somehow, is?
Yeah, I I I can zoom in, just wanna make sure that it's it's being uh cast, yeah. So, um, this is a stormwater management permit application for a single-family home. Off of seventy-one White Loaf Road, um, the property. Was previously partially developed with a wetland crossing, which is just off the plan here. And I can uh bring up. Um, sort of uh a different view, an aerial view. So White Loaf Road is here, running west to east here. There was a wetland crossing that was constructed in this area. Here, just inside the property, actually it shows better on uh, on on this one here. Um, White Loaf Road is here, uh, the wetland crossing here. And then the pu- the driveway and home area was partially cleared at that point. Uh, what what we have, what we're proposing now is the formal design of that driveway. With the single-family home location, as well as the Septics uh, Leach Field location shown. Uh, to the north here. Um, what we have is a driveway that runs at about, you know, it's pretty flat coming across the crossing. Um, and then goes up at about an eight and a half percent grade up to a la- uh, sort of a flatter area in front of the garage. And that's where your single-family home is going to be located, basically at the top of. Um, right at the crest of the hill, at the top of the the hill there. Um, what we're doing in regard to stormwater management for the site. Is that we have a fire retention area being proposed um, to the west of the house here. Um, this will collect all of the roof runoff, it has been sized to attenuate. Um, static volume of up to the the three-inch storm event, which is corresponds to the two-year storm. And then the driveway itself has been designed, um. With three-foot wide shoulders on either side. And check dams located every fifty feet, just to kind of mitigate some velocity. Uh, they will be riprap lines, so we don't anticipate, um, you know, having excessive velocity coming down the soils on the side. But there is a cut, um, this is a big, you know, a large cut to get that eight percent. Uh, grade up to the single-family home. And um, off of to the east side of the driveway, we have a. Sort of uh, what we're calling a a vegetated plunge pool, so. Will capture whatever's coming down the driveway here on the east side, about halfway, kind of directed towards. This um, this plunge pool and then off over uh, through an overflow, we're down the hill towards. Um, an intermittent stream and adjacent bordering vegetated wetlands here. Um, on the west side of the driveway, uh, it's a pretty similar situation, we have a riprap swale. That will collect the runoff and divert it and direct it down towards the. Um, the wetland that the crossing crosses down uh, towards the the southernly end of the driveway here. Then. From, you know, the the plunge pool, from that point down to the other end of the driveway. Uh, we have a riprap level spreader to further mitigate for stormwater runoff coming off of the driveway. So, we do have a number of stormwater uh mitigation measures proposed as part of a part of the uh. The proposed layout, uh, we have filed a stormwater. Uh, management permit, um, requesting um, some waivers for some of the items that are listed in the application itself. Um, and those are mostly the items related to um, developing the pre and post-development. Uh, calculations, hydrologic calculations. Uh, we feel that, you know, the measures that are being proposed are more than sufficient to mitigate for. Um, just basically a single-family home and driveway, um, cause most of the disturbance. Isn't, you know, is part of the development of the site and will be re-vegetated and um. And, you know, producing those hydrologic calculations is just, um. You know, is just uh, uh, seems a little excessive for for what we are proposing to do here. So that's um, basically the project in a nutshell, so if there's any questions, I can certainly try to answer them.
Mr. Fergal, this is your expertise, so I will uh defer to you.
You know, look, looking at this plan, if you zoom in, there's. All the erosion control, sediment control features, so they have sanitation, sanitation fencing all around the property. They have identified, um. Stormwater mitigation measures to slow the water as it's going down the proposed driveway. Grades, they have plunge pools, they also have a buyer retention area. I mean, this, this meets the. The letter of our regulation, um, with respect to what's in our purview, so. I I I don't have any concerns or any comments to add beyond this.
Dan, any questions from you?
Yeah, the only question of mine is just the history of the clearing of the property, um, because I know that we had. The a neighbor had voiced concern and the uh, the building inspector had looked at it. And that's when we found that the clearing had already occurred. And we uh, we agreed with the owner at that point that they were going to. Because because vegetation had already started to reestablish itself, that we were going to uh, just basically. Let it, let it grow back in at that point in time. So, I guess, how does that, how does this fit with with that conversation we had with a year or two ago?
Uh, I, maybe Christian can speak to that, I'm not familiar uh, with that conversation specifically. Oh, con- con- uh, conversation specifically, but um. And what I can say is that, um, all the areas that are not, you know, driveway. Uh, or, you know, roof-related will be re-vegetated. So there, you know, they they will establish with uh vegetation once the project is completed.
Hmm, okay.
The application uh seems to be complete, I just was looking over the waivers requested, and I don't think there uh. You can correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, if you wanna just uh. I have the printed copy here, but I'll just run them by you to see what you say. Your feeling is, the existing and proposed vegetation and ground surfaces with runoff coefficients for each. They asked for a waiver on that. A drainage area map showing pre and post-construction watershed boundaries, drainage area and stormwater flow paths. Including municipal drainage system flows.
I think it just, so these, these first two items you mentioned relate to. An overall stormwater analysis, um, as well as site plan mitigation measures, so. I I I think that's overkill for a residential project here. It's being mitigated accordingly, um, in terms of. Providing a plunge pool, uh, providing bio-retention swells, as well as slowing down the speed of the water. As it's, as it's uh flowing down the hill. I I feel that those address the items and and I don't think we, you know. We we don't need to see anything else beyond those items that that have been provided here, so I'm. I'm for those first two waivers uh to be granted.
Hmm. If there are no any, any other questions or concerns, anybody from the public out there that is willing. To say something or make a comment? Mister uh Chris, Mister Casa, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No.
Okay, then, for all intents and purposes, I'll uh ask for a motion on this uh. Permit for approval?
I'd like to make a motion to approve uh, the site plan for and the and the conditions and the waivers we've we've. Uh, proposed for this property.
That would be for seventy-one White Loaf Road.
Seventy-one Light White Wolf Road.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in pro- all in favor, Paul?
All I.
Dan?
I.
Myself, I. Okay, Philippe, I'll uh. Draw that decision up for you and send it off, you want me to send, send it to Rob or to? One of your associates?
Yeah, if you send it to Rob, we'll get it in the office.
Hey, you know, you pronounce his last name wrong, it's it's Slovak. Yeah, that's, that's how you say, if French Canadian would say it, just so you know.
Alright, thank you for your presentation, thank you, um, uh, Mr. Kasha for uh, being patient with us there. Uh, we're a couple of weeks out, but uh, we finally got to it, so, good luck.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. A couple of minor things here going forward. Janine, uh, out of the assessor's office asked me to, uh, correct the, the address assignment for Jim LaBree's property. Uh, for some reason or other, as, as Mark, uh, mentioned there up on College Highway, it's listed as three ninety-nine, but three ninety-nine is on the opposite side of the road, but as he said, as you recall, that, that's where the former property owners, they own both sides of the road, so for some reason or other, her map had three ninety-nine. So Mark is requesting three ninety-eight College Highway, so can I have a motion that we just change three ninety-nine to three ninety-eight College Highway?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All aye.
And then we have another request, and this is, uh, Peter, I pronounced his name right, Peter Chistawa, who currently lives on eighty-five Maple Street, but his property also abuts Crooked Ledge Road. And he is going to be building a house, I guess, I think that was an A and R we did some time ago, but he would like to have his address changed from Maple Street to Crooked Ledge, because that's where he would like his driveway to come off of. So he's, uh, making that request. And again, the assessors, uh, sent me a note that the, uh, numbers on either side of them are of that parcel is forty-four Crooked Ledge, and then the next one is fifty-four, so I think a compromise would be we'll go with fifty Crooked Ledge for his, uh, his new address from Maple Street to Crooked Ledge. Anybody got any concerns with that? Motion?
I'm sorry, it's the middle of the yawn.
Anyone make a motion?
I, uh, I type it up as Paul, as Paul had already done it, so I can be more efficient, and I can say second.
Paul, Paul, can you please repeat that, I'm sorry?
Yeah, just, uh, gentleman wants to change his address from eighty-five Maple Street to fifty Crooked Ledge, he lives on the corner. And he's building a house, and he'd rather be off Crooked Ledge than Maple, so I think it must have something to do with the road.
Got it, so, um, but I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the address change from Maple Street to Crooked.
Eighty-five Maple to fifty Crooked Ledge.
Eighty-five Maple to, to, uh, fifty-five Crooked Ledge.
Fifty.
Fifty, five oh.
Five oh. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, what else we got here? Um, I think you saw some weeks back, couple of weeks back, uh, the, uh, picture that Greg Felton at Thirty-two High Street about the, uh, precast um, culvert that we requested finally got installed this past, uh, summer fall, and the engineer had sent a, uh, copy of that, so as far as I'm concerned now that, uh, we're he's, he's met all our requirements, and now I guess it's still up, still fighting with you people, aren't you, uh, still got some issues with him, Dan, on conservation?
Well, I'm actually, took a break from Conservation Commission, um, so I couldn't tell you where they're at.
But that's their problem, that's not our problem. Um, Ron Lauren sent a letter, you probably saw a copy of it, to have construction ceased at eighty-one Valley Road where there, there was, uh, some extreme uh, soil disturbance there, haven't heard anything more, but the guy's gotta apply for a stormwater permit, but right now his construction has been ceased any further. Um, I think, I think that's it.
So, is there anything we should do to clear Thirty-two High Street off the books for us?
No.
We're good. Okay.
That was a condition on, on his approval, and now it's finished. Uh, Joy, do you have anything to add?
Um, not from select board, I don't think, I think we were talking with Housing Authority last night, though. Um, about having a joint meeting with planning board, I don't know, Dan, if you wanted to um, talk more on that.
Yeah, I can, I can talk more on that, we were interested, like she said, uh, um, having a joint meeting, so we can continue the conversations on affordable housing and, uh, the efforts the, the Housing Authority is trying to make in terms of, uh, perhaps zoning changes that may improve that situation, so, um, I think we'll have, I'm, I'm sure Mr. Seamy will be in touch to, to set that up with you.
Yeah, I think they wanted to know, I don't think there was a rush on it, they just wanted to know, like, what Penn had worked on with the planning board, um, on the zoning.
Well, that was, uh, are you talking about Ken Comia's work? From the DLPA recently?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was completed. His work was completed and it's, was submitted to the new, uh, E-code.
Okay, yeah, so I guess, I mean, I I wasn't there for every single meeting to, and, um, I just think that, like, the Housing Authority was interested in, in what was submitted and what was worked on.
Right, oh, I can, if you can send me, Joy, um, Jim, I, Jim, I understand is leaving the board, huh?
Yeah, he's retiring from the board.
Yeah.
If you can give me a contact, uh, other than, if you, unless it's Dan, but I've got some stuff I can send over, but
Oh, he's not retiring yet, he's, not yet.
He's gonna serve out his term.
Yeah, he's going, yeah.
But
He's, he's still, he's still on the board.
Just put the Housing Authority on, on notice, though, that those changes in anything we submitted for E-code is gonna be coming to public hearing here pretty quick, so it can get a downtown meeting warrant, so they'll also, they'll also have a chance to weigh in at that, I would hope they would attend that meeting and weigh in on some of those, uh, changes that were made, and if they have to be uh, tweaked at all.
Yeah, so maybe there is no necess, it's not needed to have a meeting if you wanna just send over whatever changes, so, so like, so the Housing Authority can just start reviewing them.
Yeah, alright.
That would make sense.
Yeah, that's actually my fault, because I was confused and thought we hit, we're only going to the point of the codification, not including the changes, so I said that, and then I said, you know, Ken's thing was separate, so apologize, anybody was watching the Housing Authority meeting last night, I misspoke.
It, uh, it was a chance to get it included, and
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, and if so, get it approved this spring rather than waiting till next fall, so we can get a head start on it. Um, that's that. So I'll send it to Jim, and hopefully, did, did you get any of that yourself, Joy, or no?
No. Okay, thank you. I was present for the meetings and, like, you know, listened and and took notes, but I didn't have any, I don't have any, like, documentation.
Right. The only thing I have is, uh, a warrant to the Daily Hampshire Gazette, and it's for both those public hearings we just, uh, had. One is for five oh nine seventy-eight. And the other is for Bear with me just a minute. I guess they were both five oh nine seventy-eight, so, two, two legal ads from the Daily Hampshire Gazette. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to those two, uh, uh, legal ads the Hampshire Gazette.
Second.
And that would be for a total of ten nineteen fifty-six. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Other than that, I have nothing else. Thank you, guys, uh, I think we can wait for committee reports, maybe next meeting, Dan, is that on your plate? Uh, so, so we got a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'm five for five tonight.
I appreciate that, because it allows me to type while you're doing it, so I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Joy. Thank you, East Hampton Media, and thank you all who
Good night.
Have fun watching, have a good week. Good night.
Yeah, bye.
Thank you, bye.
Good night.